What has gone on and so I just wanted to also thank the staff for their partnership through the different phases of work that we've completed here. We've been working with Mr. Jimmy Lopez regarding the facilities and the needs in the facilities, Joe Emmons, Roger Romaine, and always working with Sharon Haddix to make sure that these projects fit within the county's budget and are financially feasible. And of course with Dr. Manchin with his vision and support for guiding us to success. So over the past five years Harrison County Schools has implemented more than eighteen million dollars worth of improvements to their schools on their own without asking for more tax dollars and things like that. The work that has been included is capital intensive projects that needed to be done and these projects also generate energy savings. Harrison County Schools has had the ability to specify what they wanted in these projects and what they needed in their schools and the work has been completed faster and quicker through this process. So every project, we work all year round, but every project with regards to the heavy equipment, the HVAC, the air conditioning, the heating and that kind of thing has been ready for each new school year. So you can see a lot of the work that has been completed here. You know, in the first phase we were able to do seven schools of HVAC. Through these processes we have impacted a lot of the learning environment in the county. We have done more HVAC projects in the course of five years than I've seen in any other county in the state. So we've gotten a lot of work done, working together. So I know everyone's interested in the savings results for these projects. So each project has a guarantee of savings and that's what helps pay for the project over time. So in each phase of work we have exceeded the guarantee. So you can see the guaranteed savings and the actual savings on the slide here. So during construction we don't guarantee savings, but we achieve savings during the construction of the project. So in Phase One we saved over a hundred and ten thousand dollars constructing the project and for through Years One, Two, and Three we've exceeded the guarantee. For Phase Two it's the same story. We had a guarantee of energy savings for over a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars for Year One, over a hundred and thirty-eight thousand for Year Two, and each year we've exceeded the guarantee. Phase Three is complete and you can see that we had a construction savings of over twenty thousand. Year One the guarantee was sixty-six thousand and you can see that we've exceeded that as well. What's not on this slide is Phase Four, the construction of the Phase Four project that we did that you all approved last year is complete. It's finished as well. But the big story is the excess savings. We have exceeded the guarantee so far by over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Those are dollars that can be plowed back into Harrison County Schools with regards to technology, computers, books, and those sorts of things. So it's a huge success story. So again, I just want to thank Harrison County Board of Education for their partnership. Now I'm gonna show you a little slideshow, a little show and tell. I know it's not every day that someone wants to see a boiler room or a rooftop unit or things like that, but you know, a big part of Phase Four was Big Elm Elementary. So you can see the hallway there with the lighting. Up above that is where the water source heat pumps that we replaced were, there was fifty-one of those. We've actually updated the boilers, the cooling tower, all the lighting is LED. So we would say that Big Elm Elementary is complete. We've done a lot of improvements to that school. Of course, we've touched every school in the county through these projects. So this is just a sampling of some of the work that we've done. Bridgeport High School, you can see there that interior lighting has been done to LED. There's been new stage lighting that was approved in Phase Four for all the high schools, domestic hot water, rooftop replacements for many different rooms including band, library, green room, auditorium, cafeteria, and tech ed. This school still has a need for a new boiler. That's something we may consider for another phase of work. Okay, let's see. Here's Washington Irving. Okay, Washington Irving also has had a lot of HVAC improvements, heating, cooling, air conditioning controls, new boilers, domestic hot water, and gym and cafeteria rooftop The next one just gives you a demonstration of the stage lighting at Robert C. Byrd. Of course, all the high schools in the county have had this improvement done. So prior to this being done, the students would have to take a collar film up to the light itself to change the color. So they have the control panel where they can affect the lighting on the stage and that kind of thing. So I think that when you all attend an event or a play at these high school auditoriums, I think you're gonna be fairly impressed. This is, they're really happy with it at the schools. I've been out to visit them. Nutter Fort is just another example, just to show you a primary school or an elementary school. We've done many improvements there. You can see some of the before and after pictures there of the construction. We've completed water conservation, six rooftop units, boiler and cooling tower at Nutter Fort. There are a lot of schools, several schools out there with more water source heat pump needs and Nutter Fort's one of those. So that may be something that we'll consider for the next stage. I know when we presented Phase Four, we showed you all the spreadsheet that we use for a methodical process of trying to choose, you know, which projects are next, you know, if the equipment's at the end of its useful life, it gets bumped to the top of the highest priority need and that kind of thing. So we work with the maintenance staff to be sure that we're addressing, you know, the things that need to be fixed. We still have approximately six to eight schools that still need to go LED. So that's something else that we may be presenting in the near future. But above all, all of these projects is work that needs to be done one way or the other. This is just a process that has even additional benefits over and above the energy savings. You know, you have the most energy efficient schools in the state that you've gotten needed improvements completed quickly, addressed the highest priority needs in the county, decrease operational issues, decrease service calls, address deferred maintenance backlog, standardize the lighting, decrease your carbon footprint, improve indoor air quality, address comfort issues. And in my opinion, it's the best overall comprehensive energy savings project in the state. Also, above all, it has positively improved the learning environment for the students and staff of Harrison County Schools. So I just want to thank you again for all your hard work, all your commitment and partnership with ESG to make these projects very successful. So I'm gonna ask if anyone has any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments this time?
No, I think it's really good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, next, we have delegations. Are there any delegations this evening?
We were supposed to have a delegation, but she thought you even started at six, but she just sent me an email here. She should be here in twenty minutes, but I didn't see whether the other two.
All right. If there are no objections with the board when the delegation arrives, we will give the delegation the time to speak.
No objections.
All right. That brings us down to superintendent's update.
Mr. President, we have a couple of things that we'd like to bring to attention of the board. Some good things are happening in the county, obviously, and I'm gonna recognize Dr. Donna Hague who will give us an update on a couple of what I consider very important components to the curriculum and overview and draw your attention to the superintendent's update under curriculum, ACT, the American College Testing, and the direction we're moving, and the Options Program, which has allowed us to address the needs of a lot of students that we otherwise would probably lose. So I'd like to recognize Dr. Hague who'll give you an update.
Yeah, we just provided a summary of the ACT data. That was embargoed until the end of October, so we wanted to get this out to you. Harrison County Schools is at a nine-year high on our math ACT scores. We have increased in English, math, and reading. Our scores in science are consistent with the previous year. Our composite score has increased. We're above the state in all areas tested on the ACT and we're well within the reach for our math national average score. So those results were embargoed until October 16th. And the other bit of information, you have a brochure before you that was created for our Options Program. In 2019, the school year that ended then, we have fifty-three students that would have otherwise been dropouts for Harrison County Schools having not completed the Options Program. And I know you all have recognized the Options Program along with the state at a couple of board meetings. So under Dr. Manchin's leadership, we've seen great success with that and of course you all support. So the brochure is there. The intent is to get that out to parents, to homeschools of those students and in areas throughout the community so that parents are aware of that availability. The neat thing about that Options Program is it's connected to a CTE pathway and so we're not only ensuring that those students graduate from high school, but we are also sealing that connection with them with the CTE.
Why don't you stop there real quick, Donna, and kind of reiterate and reemphasize how important that, what you just said, what we're doing here with the CTE programs for these students, these options.
Sure. That is one of the essential goals of our Options Program.
I'm incredibly impressed with the variety.
Yeah, absolutely. And you'll see there in that brochure, that's listed for parents to be able to take a look at that.
Do they?
Agriculture is in there, the education and training, finance, government, public administration, health, science fields. So those connections are made when we are considering a student for those Options Program and we steer them in that pathway and use their experience at their homeschool to make them a completer in a CTE program. So they're not only leaving us with their graduation requirements fulfilled, but they're also leaving with a skill base in a career technical education program.
What would you attribute, Donna, the fairly dramatic drop in the number of ACT statewide in Harrison County, the number of taking the ACT?
Sure. So we know that in 2017, our state of West Virginia adopted the SAT as the eleventh grade test benchmarking and for, you know, our assessment for the eleventh graders. So every eleventh grader in the state takes the SAT and then they can send that SAT score up to four institutions free. And so we did see a decrease as the state did in those ACT test takers. But we do have a good portion of students that take that ACT as well as the SAT. Different tests, different format, they want to see if they can score better on one or the other. Mr. Ebert is still doing his ACT prep classes and has had great success with that. And so we have a lot of students that take both.
Do we supply both or is it something?
The state provides the SAT free.
Right, but if a student wants to take the ACT, is that something that?
They pay for it.
They have to do it on their own time? And how much do they pay for it?
Oh, I don't know that off the top of my head.
It's about a hundred and fifty bucks.
Is it?
Yeah. Oh, I know, I've had to pay for it a couple times.
And many students, they don't just take it once for the ACT.
Right.
They work to improve that score, so. But yeah, the ACT is not paid for by the state for us.
That now is the test, the SAT is there to test it for the junior year, so.
If a kid's gonna go out with state or both of them?
SAT is accepted as well as ACT. Yeah, and the Promise Scholarship, they can use that SAT score for as well.
Which I think's excellent, you know, showing that Harrison County now exceeds the state average in all categories and a fairly dramatic increase in English and mathematics.
Yeah, nine-year high on our math score.
Which we've really been emphasizing, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Hague. Mr. Lopez, we have a few updates, obviously the CEFP. I will praise the board that Thursday at three o'clock we'll be out at Lost Creek for any board members as we start now our process of designing the new proposed building, the planning phase where we'll allow cooks, teachers, aides, everybody to be involved in the whole process. So at three o'clock we start that process and hopefully before too long we'll start in the schematic phase. But Jimmy, you want to give the board an update on the property which we talked about, I think last, or last board meeting about the possibility of acquiring some land over at Lincoln High School?
Sure. Just a reminder that this EFP meeting is next Tuesday, the 12th. So that will be a big meeting. We should get a nice turnout. Yeah, I checked into the property and actually found and tracked down both properties and both of them, they're not interested in selling, but they are interested in leasing right-of-way through there, which would be, basically provide an opportunity for us to go in and maybe lay some sort of base down, maybe perhaps blacktop. Of course, it would have, you'd have to work through the lease agreements. But both of them verbally are interested in allowing that, very much willing to do that.
Who owns the property that would be?
The Brennan, the Brennan family owns one piece and Mark Walsh owns the other piece. He's a city.
And he's the last house?
I mean, part of it.
He's the last house of the street?
Yep, up by the new tennis courts.
I mean, I'd like to pursue that, especially if they're of that opinion to help us with it. That's even better than what we thought.
Do we have to get a ride away from both of them or could we deal with only one of the properties?
No, you can't get to Stan Harfield from Lincoln High School's property unless you go through both tracts of Lincoln.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen, do you want to give an update on the meeting the other day at United Technical Kristen? Perhaps not.
She's still there.
You still there, Kristen? Anyhow, we met the other day at United Technical Center. There's a lot of discussion.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can now. I asked you. That's okay.
We had the state director there and she was wonderful, actually, and we kind of just went over a lot of things and she really gave us a lot of good suggestions on different avenues. She brought it up, how they are going a lot, they're really, really expanding to aerospace throughout the state. I loved what she said about the virtual business setups and hands-on. So she just really had a lot of good ideas and a lot of things that the state is putting into CTE programs and it was a kind of exciting meeting, actually.
Very good.
Very positive.
Yeah, very good.
It was wonderful.
Yes.
And that's all I have.
That's excellent. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all I have for the superintendent's update.
All right. I noticed some people walking in. Is that our delegation for this evening? No? Okay.
You want to be? You can be.
Okay. Well, we will move on to further business. This brings us down to consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent items as recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to approve the consent items. Mr. Dougherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. New business. Out-of-state professional leave requests and out-of-state travel study requests. Is there, is there a motion to approve the out-of-state professional leave requests and the out-of-state travel study requests as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Hammack has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoag has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
I need to excuse myself from Julie Yergo from Professional Leave, that's my sister. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, noting Mr. Dougherty's recusal, is there any further discussion?
Yes. I got to looking at the out-of-state travel and the one area that, you know, I'm a little concerned with was the, yeah?
The model kids, model schools in Orlando.
Yeah, the model school thing in Orlando, Florida. I, you know, I think that, you know, it's June 28th through July 2nd. I know that it comes out of federal, you know, federal money is what funds it, but I think, you know, I can't understand why, you know, we can't have, if a principal's going, why they can't go and take part in the conference and then bring the information back and share it with the staff and every, or all the other principals in the county because I, you know, but it shows principals and usually a teacher or two out of every school that's, that's signed up for it. And I think there's some others to come that aren't here on here as of yet. And since it's not until, you know, July, June and July, I'd like, of course, to maybe table this at this time and, you know, when we get every, every school that's involved and the number of, actual number of participants that we then put back on the agenda and bring it back to us since, like I said, we're not, we're not there yet. And I know one year it's in Orlando, Florida, another year it's in Washington, DC. And I just think that last year was in Washington, now it's in Orlando. I just think that we ought to maybe wait till everybody's that's supposedly signed up to go if they could get all the information in, we get a total cost and everything and then maybe bring it back to the table and have a formal vote on it.
Yeah, I certainly, and I respect that, Doug, and I won't object to that if that's the desire of the board. The Model Schools Conference is probably the premier conference in the United States for education. They have some of the best speakers and it's not uncommon that the vast, vast majority of people in attendance are regular classroom teachers. The interaction, the networking they do with other teachers, I've had the opportunity to attend and it's an excellent program, but certainly I respect the, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say that if the board so desires, and I certainly can understand and respect that and I can appreciate Mr. Hoag wanting to make sure that we're efficient in the way we operate. If I understand you correctly, Doug, you'd like us to get the, everybody who's who wants to, or proposes to attend?
Yes, yes. Everybody, all the principals, all.
And the cost?
And the cost and all.
You have a federal fund?
You're talking about a federal fund?
And I'll agree in part to Doug and disagree in one part is, yeah, put it out and see who, I always, I hate when people say it comes out of federal funds because it's still tax dollars.
It's still the money.
It's still tax dollars. So I never like that argument because, you know, it doesn't mean that just because it's federal funds it starts to spend. I, the part, I agree with, yeah, let's see who else is out there. The only part I disagree, I'm not gonna say because they're a principal, they should go in the classroom. I'd, I'd say the opposite of anything is true. Let's send the classroom teacher. But in this instance, you know, I do see like three from one middle school, two from one high school, and two from one elementary and it may be better if, nothing else, if we can get one from, break that up to where those are from different schools, you know, if we're gonna send them, rather than three from one school, let's send one from, from seven different schools instead of, you know, seven from, from three different schools. That's my only issue.
The only thing with them sending from multiple schools is I've been to different conferences where they will split up into different sections. So if teachers are interested or principals are interested in learning about this subject, go to this section and the other ones go to this section. Well, then if you only have one person, you can't get the best.
Yeah, but we're still one county. We're sending seven people from one county.
Well, and I understand that, but for me, I think if they're going here and they're learning about something that's gonna help them better their schools when they come back, I mean, everyone's on the same page. They're all inspired, they're all trying to motivate their schools to make their schools the best we can. And I mean, we're continuing every week or every, every meeting giving praise to these people.
Like I said, I'm good with it. I just want to make sure that everyone, in fact, if we have to expand, I'd like as many different schools to go.
And I think that's a.
I think that's a great idea.
Rather than seven people from three schools, let's get, you know, seven people from seven schools.
And I think it's an excellent idea and.
Because if it's that good, I want to spread it out and I want to make sure that, that everyone knows that that's available to them. I don't, I don't know how they were selected or if we were just saying, and if it's where we do three this year and then three next year or whatever, that's, that's fine, too.
So somebody else shed some light as to why these certain schools are targeted?
Well, we'll sit down and we'll make that presentation to you at the.
Okay.
Let me make a recommendation that we have an agenda adjustment to pull these items off of the out-of-state professional meeting request at this point in time and be brought back to us when everything is finalized.
And if I understand that correctly, what we'll do is, is give you an overview insight into the people going. And I think if I hear Mr. Hammack correctly, a little more diversification from the number of schools represented.
It's just me.
And I think it's an excellent, listen, I appreciate y'all's desire to do that and I think it's an excellent idea and I will bring it back at the next board meeting.
Okay. So the motion shall read that if, noting Mr. Dougherty's recusal, that we will also withdraw all of the Model School Conference attendees until the next meeting when they can all be finalized. So we will be voting on a request to attend out-of-state professional meetings for Trina Richer, Bridgeport Middle, Julie Yergo, Lincoln High School, and Christina Harris, Central Office. And the out-of-state professional leave requests and out-of-state travel study requests with those recusals and those removals. Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us down to new business, item B. Contract with West Virginia University Center for Excellence in Disabilities and the Harrison County Schools for the 2019-2020 school year. Is there a motion to approve the contract between WVU Center for Excellence and Harrison County Schools as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Hammack has made the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoag has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
Is this just one of the, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just give me one second, something. All right. It might be one different one.
No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C, request authorized payment for Mother Goose in Notre Dame. Is there a motion to approve federal programs' request for authorization of appropriate payment for their participation in professional development to the teachers listed below?
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to accept. Mr. Dougherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bus driver promissory notes. Is there a motion to accept the bus driver promissory note as accepted, as presented by the superintendent?
So moved.
Mr. Hammack has made the motion to accept. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hoag has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, so at this point in time, our delegation has arrived.
Oh, okay.
Yes? We waited for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We moved the delegation down to, between old business and new business. So if you are prepared, you have five minutes. You can go ahead and speak before the board. I need to read the back. Speakers before the Harrison County Board of Education are asked to express themselves in a civil manner at all times with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by the content of your comments. This is public notice that all meetings of the school board are audiotaped and most regular meetings are videotaped to be televised later on Time Warner Public Access Channel 18. While it is not the intent of the Harrison County Board of Education to ever stifle public input into our deliberations, all speakers should be aware that if your public comments made here today violate the rights of any other person, especially under the laws of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally and individually responsible. If you are unsure of the factual nature of any claim, comment, or allegation you are about to make, the Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages you to consult first with your legal counsel. All right. You have five minutes. All right. You have five minutes.
Thank you. I apologize. I thought the meeting started at six. My name is Tanya Reinhardt and I'm just going to read what I have here. I began teaching in this county 14 years ago. I've had the opportunity to work in various roles and in seven different elementary schools during that time. Even though working in a school has always been demanding, I have taught when the job was a little less stressful than it is now. I've worked in schools with some of the greatest challenges and in others where those obstacles were rarely an issue. 14 years ago when I started teaching in this county, I can remember the strong support of my administrators at any time I had an issue with student behavior. As has been the case for far too many years now, our students are entering the school with greater needs, oftentimes beyond our capacity to help. We are struggling to help them when we have limited resources and truly no control over changes that should be made to help them be successful. I have worked and I do work along some amazing people who have a tremendous love for each child that walks into our schools. They are straining themselves and their own families to try and do what is needed. And in the midst of this, their own rights and protections are being overlooked, compromised, and oftentimes ignored. We have five-year-olds pointing in the faces of teachers with pretend guns, making it clear that they don't have to follow directions. We have primary students hitting their teachers every day. We've had students in just one classroom have to evacuate nearly 30 times due to the disruption of only a couple of students. Students as young as five are using profane language and cursing at teachers and aides in front of entire classes. Aides are often most stressed since they are with these students for longer periods of times and I can't even begin to fathom how difficult it is to keep our students safe on our buses, watching all other drivers while behaviors could be out of control. And these examples just scratch the surface. I could bring in all kinds of people that would have all kinds of countless stories. We've known for a while that this is a countywide and a statewide issue. I'm here to address the safety and respect of teachers, aides, bus drivers, custodians, cooks, specialists, and others who interact with our students on a daily basis. Simply put, these people are not being taken care of or supported as they have a right to be. We're failing our employees. West Virginia Code 18A-5-1C, better known as the Safe Schools Act, states in the Bill of Rights and responsibilities, "All students and school employees have a right to schools and buses that are safe, orderly, and drug-free. All students and school employees have a right to learn and work in school districts and schools that have clear discipline codes with fair and consistently, consistently enforced consequences for misbehavior. All students and school employees have a right to learn and work in school districts that have alternative educational placements for violent or chronically disruptive students. All students and school employees have a right to be treated with courtesy and respect. All students have a right to schools and buses that are free from bullying. All school employees have a right to expect support from school administrators when enforcing discipline policies. All students and school employees have a right to be supported by parents, the community, public officials, and businesses in their efforts to uphold high standards of conduct. All students and school employees adhere to the principles in this Bill of Rights and responsibilities for students and school personnel and behave in a manner that guarantees that other students and school personnel enjoy the same rights." To speak plainly, the law is not being followed. Our schools and buses are not safe and orderly. Consistency in how behaviors are handled is a constant frustration. Employees aren't being treated with respect. We have no safe place to discuss or take our issues as in many cases, we do not feel supported by our administrator. The law also states that if a student is removed from the classroom twice in a semester, they can't come back into that room or school bus until a meeting takes place to develop a plan for that student, and that's not happening. The Safe Schools Act states that employees who are assaulted should contact law enforcement. Yet, we have also been led to believe that law enforcement won't do anything, so where are we left to turn? We do have a county policy concerning behavior. And while many good people sat on the committee to form it, at least from what I could see, nowhere on that committee was a classroom teacher, a special educator, an aide, a bus driver, a custodian, a cook, psychologist, social worker, or counselor. School employees need to be able to openly discuss the issues that we are facing and feel the support of our administrators. Administrators need to be held accountable for how they support the staff in their buildings. We need consistency in that support and how they deal with student behavior. If we don't begin to defend the dignity and rights of our employees, you only continue to see a greater issue with absenteeism, more employees moving from school to school, and then we're going to have to problem-solve how to fill vacant positions as people just continue to leave the profession altogether. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This brings us down to the next item on our agenda, personnel. Is there a motion to approve the personnel matters as presented by the superintendent?
So moved.
Motion has been made by Mr. Hammack to approve personnel agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Mr. Dougherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Brings us down to legal disciplinary matters. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation as presented for the suspension of Randy Lance? There is no motion to accept. The superintendent recommends a one-day unpaid suspension of Randy Lance.
Yeah.
I have to announce it before we vote.
No, you vote after.
Wait, here it is.
They've got the code list right here. West Virginia Code 6-9-8-4. For personnel. That's executive session.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation. Is there a second?
A second for discussion.
Mr. Hammack has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion?
The employee had a, had a opportunity to have a meeting with you, it says, as of November 1st. Was there such meeting held?
Yes. We actually sat down and discussed it. And we interacted and the employee understood what he did was inappropriate and accepted the recommendation or at least advising that I recommended one day. He understood that and...
So basically, the due process was?
Due process was offered.
Okay.
And the employee did not choose to have a hearing.
Correct. That's correct.
Is there any further discussion?
The, can I make, well, do we need to call on this? I need, I need more information.
We're going to executive session.
I'd like to executive session.
You want me to, Mr. President, I move pursuant to Chapter 69A-4, subsection 2 of the West Virginia Code, the board go into executive session, discuss personnel and personnel matters, which if discussed in public might affect adversely the reputation of any person.
Mr. Hammack has made a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Article 6-9-A-42 of the West Virginia Code. Mr. Dougherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will be in executive session. Ms. Messenger, I will call you on the other line.
Make a motion we return to regular session?
Mr. Hammack has made a motion to return to regular session. Mr. Dougherty has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Ms. Messenger has joined us again. No discussion. We are back in regular session. There was a motion on the table in regard to the superintendent's recommendation of a one-day unpaid suspension. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. One-day suspension of unpaid suspension for Randy Lance. This brings us down to the adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Hoag has made the motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammack has seconded the motion to adjourn. Is there any discussion? No discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Hoag?
Children of peace, go in peace.
We are adjourned.